Hello, 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 hello everyone. This is the September 24th forum for the Stone Mountain post five city council race. I am your host editor Decaturish editor and publisher Dan Whizen Hunt. This is the Decaturish.com Twitch show. Our candidates today are Shawnee Linder. Shawnee, how are you today?
Good, how are you doing?
Doing good, thank you. Uh, thank you for joining us. I want to speak up a little bit. Uh, you sound a little quiet. Uh, and uh, council member Shawnet Bryant, council member Bryant, how are you today?
I am fine, thank you for asking.
Thank you all for joining us. So, uh, this is the Decaturish.com Twitch show. Uh, we, this is the 12th of our 14 forums. Um, so we are rounding the corner on that, about to wrap all those up. Uh, all of our elections coverage of Tucker Clarkston and Stone Mountain can be found at TuckerObserverVotes.com. Again, that address is going to be TuckerObserverVotes.com. And I just want to say, uh, we, we've had really great participation from Stone Mountain, both the candidates and the audience on these forums. So if you've been watching these, if you appreciate the forums, if you appreciate us covering Stone Mountain and us actually covering city council meetings instead of just covering whatever drama's going on at the park that week and letting you know what's going on in your city, please visit SupportMyLocalNews.com. You see the little ad for it right there. Uh, and sign up to become a paying supporter of Tucker Observer or Decaturish. Uh, you could do that for as little as $3 a month. It helps, it helps us to pay the bills. It helps us to send reporters to your meetings to cover them. Uh, you know, our, our website is free, but the, the cost to produce the news that goes on TuckerObserver.com and Decaturish.com is certainly not free. Uh, and it's not a hobby, we actually employ people. So if local news matters to you, please, uh, put, put your hat, put your money in the game and, and help us, uh, continue to provide the news that matters to you. So with that little pitch out of the way, I'm going to give each candidate, uh, three minutes to make their opening statement. And then we're going to go into questions and we're going to give, uh, each candidate three minutes to make a closing statement. If, uh, the candidates get too close to the three minute mark, I am going to lift my finger, uh, about 10 seconds out so they know they have time to wrap that up. Uh, so we are going to start with, uh, council member Bryant. Council member Bryant, you have three minutes to make your opening statement.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, while you're running for this office, I have decided to rerun for this city council member for the city of Stone Mountain because as a 25 plus resident of this amazing city, I am committed to the work, ensuring that the city continue to show growth as we recognize the potential to make Stone Mountain a world-class destination. I want the residents of Stone Mountain to be proud of the place they call home. My next initiatives are to move forward with improving city infrastructure, including the sewer sanitation and leading to new green initiatives. Importantly, ensuring the city is doing its part to protect and promote our residents' well-being. Also, public safety is a concern as I want everyone who live, work and visit Stone Mountain to feel safe and know that their safety is our top priority. Again, Stone Mountain is a city rich in history, but with that history come real-life issues that must be addressed. And I know that we must come together on things, even if we may not agree, all in the pursuit for the good of Stone Mountain, together we can achieve more.
Thank you. Uh, Shawnee Linder, you have three minutes to make your, and before we move on, if you were streaming me, please, please, please turn that off because it creates an echo effect. It's on a delay and it gets distracting as heck. I promise you people are seeing this. I promise you it's being broadcasted. Please turn it off. Um, uh, Shawnee Linder, uh, you have three minutes to make your opening statement. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Dan. Um, first, I just want to say thank you and Decaturish for putting on these forums. I agree, it is very important for our community to get a little more involved in the local government. Um, our local government is what sets the tone for our day-to-day lives. So I really appreciate doing this and giving the, um, community the opportunity to meet us and hear what we stand for and what we want to see happen in this great city of Stone Mountain. Um, so my name is Shawnee Linder. I am an Atlanta native. Um, I grew up in East Point. I am a wife, I'm a mother, I'm a Realtor. Um, I've been in this, um, city of Stone Mountain for about 13 years or so with my husband and children. Um, immediately when I moved here from East Point, which is where I'm from originally, um, I saw such great potential. Everyone sees the potential in Stone Mountain, but unfortunately, like you had mentioned before, all that is promoted about our city is the diversity. I'm sorry, not the diversity, but the, um, conflict, um, or the racial injustices or the, the history, the negative history. No one talks about, um, how diverse we are, how, um, special we are, how much we have to offer. We hear so much about the potential, 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 but no one is ever doing anything about that potential. So this, um, gave me an opportunity to get more involved in a city that I say that I love. I do want to see, um, initiatives not only be put to the forefront, but someone make a decision about it. I want to see things move forward, I want to see our city progress. Um, and I think that I'm the right person to do that. I'm a great listener. I want to involve the community and the citizens more. I actually want someone to stand up and be that voice for them. Um, and really start tackling some of those things that are really, really at the forefront and the most important to the community as a whole.
Thank you. Uh, so before we get started with the Q and A, we, we do have some members, uh, watching us. If you have a question that you want to ask the candidates, uh, create yourself a Twitch count, give us a follow, put your questions in the comments. I, I will tell you in advance, questions directed at specific candidates about specific things are probably not going to get asked. I prefer to have a question that is general that applies to both candidates. Uh, so if you could keep that, uh, in mind as you're asking your questions, that'll help you, uh, ensure that your question actually gets asked. Uh, so with that said, uh, Shawnee, we're going to start with you for our first question. And the question is, Stone Mountain City Council seems to spend time arguing over routine matters and appears to have a backlog of projects that need to be done. As a council member, what will you do to get the council to work together to accomplish its goals? You have three minutes.
Well, yeah, Dan, so that's a common concern, um, through, you know, for a lot of people. Um, I've taken a lot of time to listen in to these city council calls and it's very, very frustrating to listen to a group of people that are supposed to have our common goal, um, you know, at the forefront, but it seems as though they're more interested in arguing or debating or trying to prove, um, a point instead of really trying to come together as a collective, listen to what the community is asking for and actually make a decision. Um, as a council member, I, I plan to listen. I plan to work together with my fellow council members. But most importantly, I plan to bring up those issues that are the most important for our community. Um, we can no longer sit around and, and, and waste our time on, on calls that are going back and forth about issues that have been on the books for, for years. It's time to really push things forward and to, to make a decision. We're, we're not going to always get along, but we have to do what's best for, for the community. And what's best for the community is listening to them, coming up with ideas and making a decision and putting a plan in, in place to, to see those, those visions, um, come to life.
Thank you. Council member, uh, Bryant, same question to you. Uh, Stone Mountain City Council does seem to spend a lot of time arguing over some pretty routine matters and they appear to have a pro backlog of projects that need to get done in the city. As a council member, if you're re-elected, uh, what do you plan to do to get the council members to work together to accomplish their goals? You have three minutes.
Dan, thank you for, uh, asking that. And it, it shows to the public that we do do a lot of arguing, but we all have our opinion. We are not going to always agree with the same thing that comes before us. But a lot of those issues is, um, issues that we could go ahead and move forward on, but then we have council members that decide this way, then we have some that decide that way. But then when it come to an end, then we have to have a tiebreaker. So with that tiebreaker being said, it's always going to sway to the other council members whether it's right or wrong. But with that being said, we do definitely need to stop all the bickering going among each other, start, uh, working closer with each other, listening to other. And I think that's the, uh, bottom line, we don't listen to each other. We do not listen. We're more so ready to jump at each other more so than listen. So, uh, communication is a breakdown and once we get that communication going, I do believe we'll be a much better council member and we could definitely move forward in the city and do what we're supposed to do. And let's take care of the citizens in the city of Stone Mountain.
Thank you. Uh, this next question, we're going to start with council member Bryant, uh, and that is going to start, uh, we're going to go with a question from a viewer. And the viewer asks, what do you see as your single most important thing to accomplish in your first year in office, or in your case, council member, the first year of your next term?
What's, uh, out here now, Dan, is our intro, infrastructure. We have a lot of issues going on in the subdivisions that we need to go ahead and move forward to take care of. Um, and this has something to do with the, the drain, uh, the storm drains as well as the sanitary sewers. We have a lot of issues going on in there. So what I would like to do if I'm re-elected is move forward into that. Matter of fact, uh, coming down here today, I was, um, stopped by one of the council members on Ridge Avenue. And hold it ago, we have a sinkhole, very deep sinkhole just below the church. And hopefully we could go ahead and move forward when we back into, uh, the council meeting and see what we could do about that. But we waste a lot of time where we should go ahead and jump to the, to the point to take care of that, uh, sinkhole instead of just, you know, alone drawing out, you know, conversation about it. Let's go ahead and get it moving, let's take care of it so we won't have any danger to the citizens that will probably walk down the, uh, the sidewalk not knowing it's there and fall into that ditch. So that's something that we definitely need to move forward to, is taking care of our, our storm drains and our sanitary sewers.
Shawnee, same question to you from a viewer. Uh, the question is, what do you see as the single most important thing to accomplish in your first year in office if you are elected? You have three minutes.
Well, I don't think that there's any one singular issue that, you know, I have in mind to kind of tackle first. I definitely agree with council member Bryant in that we do have an infrastructure issue. Um, I have seen, um, this sinkhole that she's referencing. So I do think that those things, um, are important to certainly bring up during council meetings and, and try to hopefully, um, move forward with the decision, um, on what to do about that. Um, I, again, I don't think that there's one issue in particular. I think that we need to come together as a collective and discuss all of the issues. Um, obviously, all of the issues that have been put on the back burner up until this point. Um, and again, as a collective comes together and we all, um, think of, think about what is the most important um, in terms of what, what needs to be tackled. Or, um, again, I cannot say that there's not an infrastructure issue, but I think that it's important to communicate to the citizens and work together with other council members to understand that we do have, um, splash money. We do have money available, so we can't spend our time arguing, um, about where to apply that money. We just need to come together, listen again to what the citizens are asking for, um, and allocate those funds so that they're better used, as, as council member Bryant said, for the betterment of the community, so that we all are kept safe. Um, and then we can work a plan to tackle other issues like the park, like additional amenities for our children and our, and our seniors.
Thank you. Uh, council, uh, Shawnee, uh, Linder, this next question, we're going to start with you. And, uh, the question, uh, is from another viewer. The viewer asks, uh, would you consider supporting the purchase of the rock gym from the DeKalb School Board to renovate it and use it as a community center? You have three minutes.
Um, yes, I think that I would need more information about maybe what the plans are to, to utilize that old rock gym. Um, I do know that there were plans in a comprehensive plan, um, that I read that, that had, uh, a plan to turn, um, part of the train depot into a facility for, um, seniors. So it would be important for me to see not only a center for just seniors, but more aligned with a generational center so that we can have our seniors and our youth, um, come together and have a place to go to play games, to do sports, to, um, do activities together. Um, just have a place to go either after school or before school or in the morning because everyone cannot afford to go, uh, to the YMCA. And then our schools don't necessarily have any after-school programs that I'm aware of, um, locally. So that would be a great place to co- combine the two, um, where we could work together again as, as a generational center to have our community as a whole, uh, be able to enjoy. So I, I, I think that that is something that I would support. I just would want to know or learn, um, more about that plan.
Thank you. Uh, council member Bryant, same question to you. Uh, do you support purchasing the rock gym from the DeKalb School Board, uh, to renovate it and use it as a community center? Three minutes.
Yes, Dan, I definitely, uh, support using the rock gym. When I first got on council, it was back and forth on what's going on with that rock gym. Uh, but we will have to start from the beginning. Um, prior to me getting on council, it was one council that was already involved in that issue with the rock gym. So there are some underlying, uh, issues that we definitely had to look at before we even move forward. We have to really start from the beginning. And I also mentioned to the city manager about, um, even looking into, uh, moving forward with that rock gym, but I don't even remember we even had a chance to even get the response that I asked her about. So yes, the rock gym would be a great place for senior citizen pickleball. That's what they was playing was pickleball and also somewhere for the kids to go and play during the winter time. So yes, I do support it, but we have to first start from the beginning and see where we go from there.
Thank you. Uh, and the next question, we're going to start, again, please, please stop streaming me. Please turn me off, whoever's doing that, please stop streaming me. I'm begging you. Uh, thank you. Uh, next question, we're going to start with council member Bryant, uh, and that question comes from a, uh, reader, uh, viewer. Uh, council member Bryant, do you support a blight tax to clean up nuisance properties? You have three minutes.
Hmm. Not, no, no, I do not, no, I do not. I do not, uh, support that, uh, at this time. We definitely need to go ahead and, um, we definitely need to go ahead and, uh, consider create a blight test to the incentive property owners and keeping their homes and their business up and running. So, no, Dan, I, I can't go ahead and support that at this time, no.
Thank you. Uh, Shawnee, uh, same question to you. Um, do you support a blight tax to, uh, help pay for the cleanup of nuisance properties in the city of Stone Mountain? Three minutes.
Yes, Dan, um, I do support a blight tax. Um, there actually, um, is information regarding a blight tax that city manager actually went over in the most recent city council call, um, to explain that the blight tax is just, um, for businesses and properties that are not owner-occupied or I want to go so far as to say properties that don't have a tenant in them at all. So I think that if you drive around Stone Mountain Village, you'll see that not only are there several abandoned commercial buildings, there are several abandoned properties. Uh, these are properties that have huge potential for, uh, redevelopment, new businesses to come in, um, someone to buy property to, you know, maybe build up another house or fix up or do renovations on those houses. Um, but there's no, there, there's no, um, penalty to those owners, uh, whether they're residential owners or commercial business owners to, to sell um, or to do something with their properties to keep it up. I think the ultimate goal for all of the citizens is to have a, a beautiful city, a, a clean city, a city that looks like it is up with the times and that it is going to progress. And right now, I don't know that that is what people see when they drive through here. And that's, that's, that's sad, and I think that that needs to change. I think that there needs to be some kind of penalty for those people that are holding on to property, um, really for no reason. So I, I, I definitely think that I would support a blight tax for those underused and underserved, um, properties, commercial and residential.
Thank you. Uh, Shawnee, we're going to start the next question with you, uh, and we're getting great questions from our viewers, so we're just going to keep rolling with those. Um, the question is, do you support paid parking to capitalize on revenue from visitors to Stone Mountain Park? Three minutes.
Um, well, again, Dan, I think that this is something that I would support. Um, there's always a lot of talk about, um, the city budget and what we have money for. There's also talks about what are we spending our money to do? I think that this is another way to, um, earn revenue so that we can have, um, more money to kind of implement some of, some if not all of the, the things that the citizens, communities, current council member, members are saying are important to them. We have so many tourists come down to our city and are able to park for free. I definitely would support, um, parking meters or a, a mobile parking app, um, something for, for the lots that are downtown for people to be able to pay support into our city, just like we have to do if we're going out to other cities. Um, I don't know that I know any Main Street community, um, that has progressed that does not have paid parking. Um, I would not like to see that, um, paid parking maybe transfer over to our current residents of Stone Mountain Village, but I do think that it would be fair to offer them some kind of discount for parking on the weekends or during non-peak hours. So yes, I would support paid parking.
Thank you. Council member Bryant, same question to you. Do you support paid parking in Stone Mountain, uh, so the city can capitalize on some of the visitors, uh, to the park? Three minutes. You're, you're on mute, council member, I'm sorry.
Dan, at this time, no, I do not, uh, agree with paid parking, not until we get our downtown together. Right now, we have a lot of vacant storefronts and we have a lot of people that have the storefront. Until we can get it together, no. Until we can get it together, no, we should go ahead and, uh, welcome all the citizens to come here to enjoy what we have to offer to them. Uh, it's a lot. They could come down and, and, and eat at the restaurant. They could come down and, um, uh, it's, it's not too much shopping now, but it is a few little, uh, places around it that they can go ahead and shop, like, uh, you know, for a drink or whatever, but no, I do not go ahead and believe in the, uh, paid parking. Not at this time. In the future, yes, but not at this time. Mm-mm.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, just want to say, uh, really appreciate, these are great questions from the, from the viewers. So please just keep those coming. Uh, we really appreciate it. Uh, Councilmember Bryant, uh, question to you. Um, can you give your recommend, uh, the, no, sorry, wrong question. We're going to start with this one. Uh, the local parks in the city need improvements. What improvements do you recommend for each park and when will it be done? You have three minutes, Councilmember.
There's one, um, park that I'm really concerned about right about now, and that would be, uh, Metlock Park, which is located on Ridge. Uh, we have a lot of kids in that neighborhood that goes to that park. Uh, we could use paid parking, because right now it's braver. I don't even pull up in there with my vehicle. I park on the side. So we can definitely use that. We can definitely use, uh, walking trails. We could use walking trails for, uh, people to come on through and, uh, take walks along with their kids or even they just won't exercise. We definitely need the, uh, walking trails, uh, at all the, all the parks. And also we have tools by the track. I would definitely move tools by the track away from Main Street and put it in Lila Mason Park. That would be a great location where we can go ahead and have a, a small amphitheater, maybe no more than about 300 people. That would be a great idea. And also put a walking trail along there too. So those are the two, uh, parts that I would go ahead and move forward on, um, if I'm re-elected back into the office, definitely.
Thank you. Uh, Shawnee, same question to you. Cities parks, uh, need some improvement, uh, no secret there. What, what improvements would you like to make to each of the city's parks? And, uh, what, what's your timeframe for that? When would you like to see that done? Three minutes.
Okay, well, I'm so happy to have this question. I actually just recently became, um, a committee member on our Parks and Recreation Committee. Um, I definitely have a lot of, um, passion towards our parks. We do have four parks available to us throughout the city. Um, they're McCurdy, VFW, Metlock, and Lila Mason. Um, I think that there's, that we should spread out, um, our attention to all of those parks, but I certainly, um, would want to focus a lot of the efforts and energy into, uh, revitalizing McCurdy Park right now. I think that that is a great place to, um, re, repurpose or resurface or, or whatever maybe the term is, uh, for a baseball diamond. It's a great, great opportunity for the, for us to create a youth sports, um, team. I know that there's always talk about our kids not having anything to do, um, or that they have to travel far away to do them. And they're pouring into other cities to, to be able to, to sign up for those youth leagues. I think that McCurdy Park is a great opportunity for us right now. It shouldn't take a whole lot of, of time, money, and attention, but we just need to make a decision to move forward and put something there, um, so that our children have something to do. Um, and that is a way for us to retain some, some revenue as well. I also think that VFW, Metlock, and Lila Mason are all very important parks as well. I would love to see, um, a parking lot go into VFW. I also would love to see all of our parks have updated, um, signage. There's a community garden at VFW that I would love to see, um, brought back, not brought back to life, but maybe put a little bit more emphasis on it. It's, it's a beautiful community garden. Um, they're always there doing, um, a lot of stuff to that garden and maintaining it very, very well. So I think that it deserves, uh, better signage so that it gets more of the attention it needs. And maybe it would spark people to want to buy plots and contribute to that community garden as well. Um, I think that the other parks, Metlock, Lila Mason, really just need to be cleaned up, um, and, and have their bathrooms updated and just make it a, a more safe place for, um, the kids.
Thank you. Uh, another question from a viewer. Uh, Stone Mountain is heavily dependent upon property tax revenues, has some of the highest property taxes in the state as a result. Uh, starting with Shawnee, what are, what is your idea for increasing revenue without increasing property taxes? Three minutes.
Um, I think it plays into what kind of I just was saying about the parks. I think that, um, the city as it stands has a lot of opportunities to make money. We just are not pressing forward and realizing those ideas. Um, if we were to put more focus into updating, or at least starting with one of the parks, like I said, McCurdy Park, um, to make it usable for other sports teams to maybe lease our park and come in and, and pay us to use our park, um, that money goes back to the city. Um, and that's more money for the parks to be able to, to update, um, and make better, more better improvements to all of the parks overall. Um, but I don't think that it stops there. I think that we have opportunities for growth, um, in rezoning so that there are opportunities for more commercial growth and development so that we can bring in more businesses to kind of spread out that tax base. Um, I also think, again, that I said, I, I, I do support parking meters. There's way too much traffic that comes through our city, um, because they're, they're going to Stone Mountain Park and they just don't want to pay. I don't understand why we are missing out on that very, very, very simple, um, revenue stream. It, it seems so easy to me, so I don't know why that's not something that's important in the city.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Bryant, uh, it seems, seems you might be having a little technical issue. It looks like you've rejoined us. Um, the same question to you. Uh, Stone Mountain, as you know, is, is pretty heavily dependent upon its property taxes, has some of the highest taxes in the state as a result. Uh, what is, what are your recommendations, ideas for raising revenue for the city without raising people's property taxes? Uh, three minutes, Councilmember.
Uh, you are so correct. We are the only city that has the highest, uh, millage rate at this time. And we would need to go ahead and reduce costs. Anything that come before us, we need to go ahead and take care of it at that time instead of waiting for it to come to us. Let's just give an example. Sometime in January, we'll get the information that's put on our agenda, but we should have went on ahead and went head on at that time. Uh, infrastructure, just like I mentioned earlier, if we go ahead and take care of that, we can go ahead and move it on out the way, and therefore we could go ahead and reduce, uh, the taxes in the city. But, uh, for the most part, we definitely need to go ahead and reach out to the renters. Not only the renters, but we have to go after the, uh, the landlords that's holding down the renters and, and see what we could do with that so we could go ahead and lower those taxes. But for the most part, um, reducing costs would be the first thing that we need to go ahead and take head on once, uh, I'm re-elected back into, uh, office. Uh, can you see me, Dan?
I can see you now. I can see most of your head.
I'm having problems difficulty at this time, and I apologize.
No worries. It happens to the best of us.
Okay, yes. I hate that.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. Uh, Councilmember Bryant, uh, question is going to start with you this time, again, uh, from a, from a viewer. Uh, the viewer says, there's trash all over the city, not just in the park. What is your solution to clean up Stone Mountain to make it a place for everyone to feel proud of? You have three minutes, Councilmember.
Repeat that again, Dan.
Sure. Uh, the question is, there's trash all over the city, not just in the parks. What is your solution to clean up Stone Mountain and make it a place that everyone can feel proud of? Uh, three minutes.
Ooh. Trash all the way over in the city. Let me just see. We could go ahead and move forward with, uh, speaking with our code enforcer. We do have a code enforcer. We could go ahead and, and, and probably see if we could get some help to help him out, because, um, trash, I, I don't recall seeing much trash in the city. Uh, but the code enforcer would be the one that we could go ahead and get to go ahead and handle that. And also see if we could get Public Works to help us out, because we do have several, uh, guys that could go ahead and help code out. So if they see some trash in the city, go ahead and pick it up, you know? And I don't think it's that much, but yeah, let's go ahead and include Public Works to help out with code enforcer if, if it's that much trash in the city. Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Shawnee, same question to you. Uh, the, the viewer asked, there's, says, there's trash all over the city, not just in the park. What is your solution to clean up Stone Mountain and make it a place, uh, to feel proud of? Three minutes.
Um, I don't necessarily know, like Councilmember Bryant was saying, that I, that I personally see a lot of trash. Um, I do know that you have a lot of kids going, you know, to and from the park and maybe they'll throw, I don't know, a water bottle or a bag of chips or, or whatever, they'll throw that away. Um, I know that me, when I go to these parks and if I see trash, I will always pick it up. But I think that this is just a great opportunity for the community to come together as a whole and maybe do, um, a community trash pickup day. That's a great volunteer opportunity for our youth and for us, um, as older citizens to show the youth, um, that this is what you do. This is how you keep your community intact. This is how you keep a community beautiful and clean and, and safe. And this is how you feel pride. Um, it's not to just walk by. Certainly doesn't, we don't want to teach pollution or, or littering or anything like that. So I don't know what would be so wrong with, um, coming together as a community as a whole to bring our children out and make it fun and, and show them these are the things that you can do to help keep your community clean, safe, and, and beautiful in a place that you want to be proud of.
Thank you. Uh, Shawnee, uh, this is a question from us. Uh, council recently voted five to one to reassign $53,000 of the $233,000 allocated for renovating the historic train depot. Do you think the city should continue to fund this project and why or why not? Three minutes.
Um, I think that this is a good idea to continue funding the project so long as they move forward with, um, the senior student, the senior center, which is what I think I read, um, in the comprehensive plan. Um, I, I don't know that it is a top priority, um, project, but I do think that it is, it is a great opportunity to again, have a place, um, for our seniors to be able to go and maybe take some additional, um, continuing education classes. Um, I know that there was just an initiative they gave out tablets to our seniors, so it's a great, or would be a great space for them to go to, um, get tutorials on how to use, um, those tablets in, in addition to, um, their other maybe devices and just become a little bit more, um, technologically savvy. Um, if that truly is the intent, I think that it, it would be, um, great to see that come, come to life. I just don't know that I believe it, it is a top priority at this time.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bryant, same question to you. Council recently voted five to one to reassign about 53,000 of the 233,000 allocated for the historic train depot renovations. Do you think the city should continue to fund this project? Or do you, uh, think they should stop funding the project? Why or why not? Three minutes.
At this time, Dan, we can move forward, but we will have to, let's go ahead and delay that project right now due to the pandemic, because we have a lot of people that was, that are still out of work at this time, that are still struggling trying to pay their bills. So I would like to go ahead and take that money, that $53,000, and go ahead and, um, provide it to the citizens that are still, uh, struggling trying to pay their bills at this time. Delaying that project, it would be okay, because right now we don't have many people that's going up to the visitor center at this time. So delaying that project, it would be okay. And just go ahead and focus on the citizen in the city and help them out with whatever, uh, issues that they have as far as paying their bills or utilities or whatever. So we, I would like to go ahead and do that at this time.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bryant, uh, another question from us, and we'll start with you. Uh, city recently reported a low vaccination rate among its employees. Do you think the city should require all employees to get the COVID-19 vaccine? Uh, three minutes.
Dan, that's more, uh, a personal, uh, decision. And I know we have to go ahead and make sure that everybody is protected and also make sure that they are safe in their, um, employment. So with that being said, if the individual is not okay taking that vaccine at this time, I would like for us to move forward and get those city employees tested once a week. If they can get tested once a week, I can, uh, go with that. But right now I cannot say I agree that we go ahead and make the decision to say all employees need to be vaccinated. And it could be a health issue that they have. And if they have a health issue, then we will have to go ahead and receive that information. But no, no, everyone should not get vaccinated, but tested, yes, testing every week.
Thank you. Uh, Shawnee, same question to you. City recently, uh, reported a low vaccination rate among city employees. Do you think that the city should require all employees to get the COVID-19 vaccine? Three minutes.
Um, I strongly support the science behind, the science, um, that the experts are saying, um, behind the COVID-19 vaccine. Um, I do agree that it is a personal choice. So I don't know that I fully support making that mandatory. Um, I think that the city should do and continue to do, um, a good job at strongly encouraging city employees and anyone that interacts with the public on a daily basis, um, to think about getting vaccinated, but to definitely, definitely follow CDC guidelines, um, with social distancing, um, and, and mask wearing.
Thank you. Uh, so the, we have a question from a reader that I'm going to try to, to turn into a little bit of a broader question. But the, but the reader says, uh, the elementary school is low on all testing, including reading. Uh, would the city entertain starting a reading program that would include seniors and retired citizens to help these kids? I would, I would like to broaden that question just a little bit and find out, uh, starting with you Shawnee. Um, if you're elected, how will you work with DeKalb County Schools to improve the quality of public education in Stone Mountain? Uh, three minutes.
Um, that's a tough question, man. Um, it is, our, our school system is through DeKalb County, so it definitely is a countywide issue. Um, I think that it is important to put a little more, um, effort into working with DeKalb County and, and making sure that our schools have quality teachers and after school programs that, that they need, or at least access to those programs that they need, um, to succeed. I think that as a community, on a community level, I, I certainly would, would fully support, um, any, any initiative, any program, any community involvement to go into those schools and, and help those children. I think that we have to, you know, be that person to, to help them. If, if they're not getting the help or the, or the access or the, um, what is it? You know, if they're not getting the tool that they need at home, we have a renovated library. We have access to a lot of, um, churches and a lot of people within our community that should, could, and should, um, volunteer and advocate for those students to, to be able to read better and, and tutor to them and teach them and get them up to the level that they need to be so that they're successful, um, in testing and being able to move forward to their, their next grade. I, I fully support any level of community involvement to get those kids up to where, um, they should be. They, they deserve that. Our kids deserve access to quality education. Um, and I, I would work really, really hard, um, in figuring out ways to get our students and, 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 and our community schools, um, better access to, to education.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bryant, hope you're, you're still with us. Uh, the, the question from the reader was about a specific program, which was, uh, maybe involving some of the community's seniors, uh, to improve, improve reading scores, which is a great idea. I think a, a, a general question to you could be, if you are re-elected, how will you work with DeKalb County Schools to improve the quality of education within the city of Stone Mountain? Three minutes.
Great question, Dan. Uh, I volunteer a lot over at Stone Mountain Elementary School. Uh, a reading program would be number one that I would definitely fully support and get the city, uh, to go along with me. Um, the kids over there, I know for certain, is, uh, having problems with their reading. Literacy is fairly low across the board. Literacy is fairly low across the board, Dan. Unfortunately, our students have been suffering from learning loss due to COVID-19. Uh, so at this time, if we can get some type of reading program, uh, going over there at Stone Mountain Elementary School, I think we'll be okay. I think the kids will definitely be able to learn from that. So let's start with the reading program first.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, and so this next question, um, I want to massage it a little bit too, because the, the question is, "How will you prevent gentrification?" I want to add to that, "How will you prevent gentrification and promote, uh, affordable housing if you were elected?" Or in your case, Councilmember Bryant, uh, reelected, because the question is to you first. So three minutes, if you're reelected, "How will you prevent gentrification and promote affordable housing in the city of Stone Mountain?" Three minutes.
Dan, I don't know if we can really, uh, stop gentrification. Um, and as an example, gentrification have begun starting over here in East Lake Atlanta, which they've done a, a great job over there. Over here in the city of Stone Mountain, I, Dan, I just don't think that we want to move forward with that, not right now, not right now. Not gentrification. I don't, I don't, I, I'm not going to go ahead and, uh, approve or even, I won't even say that I'll even speak on it at this time. It's, it's too much more than we have to do right here in the city. So no, I'm not going to even, uh, agree on gentrification over here, not right now, no.
Okay. Uh, Shawnee, same question to you. Uh, "If you're elected, how will you prevent gentrification and also, uh, promote affordable housing within the city of Stone Mountain?" Three minutes.
Um, I don't know that gentrification is something that you can necessarily prevent, um, to be quite honest with you. I think it just is important to focus on, um, preserving our current property values. And we need to build amenities that our citizens deserve. Uh, we need to focus on giving what the community wants right now. Um, and that, that is more amenities. That is, you know, preserving our community as it stands. I don't know, I do agree with Councilmember Bryant in that I don't, I don't know that that's a discussion that I even want to entertain. I think that we have to continue to work hard to press our city forward, to keep our current residents, um, satisfied, um, through our parks, through amenities, through, um, revitalization of, of our downtown. Um, you know, I think that if you can do that and focus on that, then you maybe don't have to worry about gentrification. Um, I also don't think that we should raise, um, property taxes. I think, again, that I, I want to not even really entertain that kind of conversation, but really, really put our focus into what we have currently and have to sustain that and, and keep our current community happy.
Thank you. Um, next question, uh, is gonna be, let's go down our list. Uh, real, real quick, I'll give you three minutes, but this probably won't take that long. Uh, Shawnee, starting with you, uh, "Do you support the city continuing to stream its, its city council meetings for the public?" Three minutes.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think that now in light of COVID-19, it is a great way for, um, the citizens to, to be, get involved or remain involved, but stay involved. Um, I think that that is, that is so important. If, you know, you, we, if I become elected, I'm, I'm becoming a council member so that I can connect my community, um, with the government and, and do things and implement things that they're saying to me, um, they want to see and that they feel are important. So what better way to keep that community involved? Um, and what is being decided with the government? What are they talking about? What, what things are they proposing? Um, there's no better way to, to, to do that and to have that community involvement without the Zoom meetings. That I, I just, I don't see it, especially with an older, um, community. That gives them access to, to constantly stay in the know. So I definitely support that. And I'm, I'm happy that they're doing that. I hope that they continue on with that.
Councilmember Bryant, do you think that the city should continue streaming the meetings even once COVID, hopefully someday, is over?
Yes, yes, Dan. We definitely need to continue, uh, streaming the meetings on Zoom. We have had more, uh, people attending Zoom, uh, since we've been, uh, on Zoom lately, especially since we've just recently been able to provide tablets to the senior citizen. And that was the main thing that we was concerned about, keeping them involved, keeping them, letting them know exactly what's going on, uh, around the city. Um, right now, it's best for all of us with this COVID out here, uh, maybe sometime next year. But right now, we definitely need to, uh, keep them, uh, on the Zoom calls. And, uh, lately, we have had quite a few people attending those Zoom calls. It's more than sixty people, so, and that's a high number. And those are numbers that you cannot fit in to sit at a hall, being it was so small. So yes, we would like to continue having those Zoom meetings, uh, those calls, uh, on Zoom. So yes.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Bryant, we're gonna start this next question with you. Tell us, what is your vision for developing Stone Mountain's downtown? Three minutes.
Oh, that's all I have. You know what I would like to see, Dan? I would like to see, uh, a brand-new mother walking with her baby in a stroller. I would like to see, uh, elderly people walking down the street, holding hands. I would just like to see a whole lot of people just sitting around, uh, talking to each other, uh, a lot of gagging, just, just communication altogether. That's what I would like to see. Uh, but until then, right now, we are, I guess, on hold, because we haven't seen anything that has really changed, uh, downtown Atlanta. I mean, did I say Atlanta? Downtown Stone Mountain. So I would like to see more activity down there with the citizens, uh, coming around. But right now, we just on hold until we can see exactly what, uh, DDA have in store for us. And that's what I would like to see, more people congregating down in, uh, the city of Stone Mountain.
Thank you. Uh, Shawnee, same question to you. Uh, "What is your vision for developing Stone Mountain's downtown?" You have three minutes.
Um, I'm, I think that the city already has a great plan to, um, develop their downtown. I think that council does have a plan. I think that they, um, have great information in their comprehensive plan. And I think that they have excellent information, um, in their, uh, master plan that was just completed about a year ago. So I would love to see for, I would love to see the city take steps, um, to move any of those plans forward. I think that when I'm out talking to people, the overall consensus aligns with what Councilmember Bryant is saying, that we do want a thriving downtown. We want to see, um, our new, new-to-the-community, um, younger people, older people, elderly citizens, um, youth. We want to be able to see everyone come together. Unfortunately for us, there's, there, that is limited, um, in what is available to us downtown. I think that another way to do that is to start again implementing some of those, um, park plans and really finalizing a decision and taking action and moving, and moving forward on what has already been presented. To say that there is no plan, um, is just not true. I would love to see even the smallest thing that has been presented, um, years ago, come, finally come, come to life. So I think that the city has great, great, great potential. It just is time for the city to, to, to make decisions, finalize decisions, and take action.
Thank you. Uh, and, and our last question, uh, we're gonna start with Shawnee. Uh, the question is, you know, the city recently held a, a Juneteenth festival. They have tunes by the tracks, uh, they have a cruise in, so they have, they have events going on down there. What type of events would you like to see the city host to attract people, uh, to the city? You have three minutes, Shawnee.
Um, I think that everything the city is doing currently, um, are all great events, events that I personally go to. Um, actually not able to go to tunes by the tracks tonight, or I'm gonna be a little bit late because I'm doing this call with you guys. Um, so any event in the city is, is well, uh, received, well, um, promoted and, and definitely well-attended by myself. I think that those events are, are extremely important. Um, I would love to see them continue on. Um, you know, we did go to the Juneteenth Festival and I thought it was a great, great experience. And I thought that it was a good opportunity for Stone Mountain to get away from the current narrative that the media always likes to portray. Um, our city is very diverse, very, um, aware, very progressive, um, or in need, or has the desire to want to progress. Um, our city can come together and be, um, more unified. And these events are great opportunities for citizens in all of the surrounding neighborhoods to come together, um, and stand up for, for something. Um, I would love to see, I remember a couple of years ago, we had, um, the Color Vibe or the Color Run, the 5K, um, run come to the city. So I would like to see, uh, more of that. I think right before COVID, the city put on, um, their first Mardi Gras. I thought that that was a great event, um, had a wonderful turnout. So I would just like the city to continue on with what they already have in the works. Um, I would like for them to reach out to those people like the Color Vibe to, you know, to, to have them to want to come to our city. I think that that is part of the problem too. We don't have enough people reaching out to these events and festivals and, and other things and opportunities to, to, to bring them to our city, to see the potential that our city has to offer. Because honestly, I think that they think people wouldn't care or people would not come, and that just simply is not, is not true. So I definitely would like to see more of an effort made for outreach and bringing, um, all of those events and festivals that happen in other major cities, um, bringing those events to, to Stone Mountain Village as well.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bryant, uh, the, the city has done pretty well with events. You know, they had the Juneteenth Festival. Uh, I assume that's gonna be a, a yearly thing. Uh, they had tunes by the tracks. Um, what kind of events would you like to see the city hold in order to attract more people, more visitors to Stone Mountain? Uh, three minutes.
I would like to, uh, continue with the Juneteenth. That was a very, uh, great time at that time. And also, I would like to see a Stone Mountain Day, where you have activities to come in as well as, uh, the kids to come in, where they can go ahead and shop, and also, uh, a Taste of Stone Mountain. Let's have one of those events. I don't recall if we've had one, maybe we have, and I probably didn't attend, probably was out of town. But a Taste of Atlanta, where everybody come on in and bring different types of food, different types of culture. That would be awesome as well. And continue with tunes by the track. That's a great, uh, event that we've been having lately as well. So, uh, if we continue to keep doing what we're doing, uh, I think we'll be okay. We also have the Christmas parade that was coming up in December, and that would be a great, uh, event to bring the, uh, family as well. So, um, I think we, I think we're doing pretty good. We can add more events. Uh, we just have to get, you know, get the citizens to, uh, come on in to see exactly what they would like to see come to the city.
Thank you. And that, uh, brings us to the conclusion of our forum. I'm gonna give each of the candidates, uh, three minutes to make a closing statement. And we're gonna start with, uh, Shawnee. Uh, you'll have three minutes to make a closing statement, Shawnee.
Okay, well, Dan, I just want to close by focusing on the citizens of Stone Mountain. Um, it's my commitment to the community as their councilwoman. I want to see their dreams, their visions, their goals come, come alive. Um, I also want to say that I'm committed to a decisive and responsive government. Um, I'm committed to a government that is actually going to make decisions, um, and, and move forward and, and press our city forward. Um, I've also committed to getting out and doing that grunt work, doing the legwork, getting out there, talking to people, talking to our community, finding out what their issues are, um, holding, you know, continuing to hold open, uh, forums like this, um, or town halls to keep our community engaged and, and involved. Um, again, I'm committed to seeing our parks, uh, flourish and, and turn around and, and thrive. I just want an overall safe, beautiful community, um, for our citizens to love and, and be proud of.
Thank you. Councilmember Bryant, three minutes to make your closing statement.
Um, why vote to reelect me back to the city council, you ask? I am here to help guide Stone Mountain into a 21st century city, implement new ideas that will capitalize on our strong tradition. I want Stone Mountain to be great. In order to become great, we need to be bold in our ideas and philosophies. Uh, making sure that Stone Mountain is a city that is open to new businesses, raising families, and striving entertainment destination. To quote the words of my son, who is a third-grade teacher, "They only pick the best, so you have to be the best." Stone Mountain is what we have to show and why we are best in everything that we do, Dan. Those are my closing statements. That is my closing statement.
Thank you. Uh, and that is the conclusion of our forum. Uh, I want to thank the viewers who tuned in and asked some great questions tonight. Um, probably some of the best questions we've ever had at one of these, so we, we really appreciate that. We really appreciate the viewers also for being engaged and voting. I want to remind them, remind the viewers, anybody watching this later on YouTube, the election is November 2nd. Early voting is gonna start October 12th. Uh, you can find all of our elections coverage at TuckerObserverVotes.com. You'll find, you know, write-ups of these forums, you'll find video of these forums, you'll find the candidate Q and As, you'll find information in every article about early voting and how to vote. Um, I want to thank the candidates not only for taking the time to show up, uh, but for their interest in public service. Uh, thank you Shawnee for your interest. Thank you Councilmember Bryant for your service. Um, local government really is the most important government that we have. It's the government that, and in Stone Mountain, I think that's particularly true. Um, you, you know, you can see the effects of, of having good government or bad government right in front of your face. Um, so I do think, uh, it's, it's really important that we have a deep bench of candidates that show up and put themselves out there and sacrifice their time, uh, to be a public servant. So I thank you both for that, because it does matter, and local politics and local elections do matter. So this is forum number 12 out of 14. We got two more left, y'all. It's been a marathon. Tomorrow is gonna be our last Stone Mountain City Council forum, and I will read the sheet of paper to remind me what that is. It is gonna be September 25th. It's gonna be Stone Mountain City Council Post 6. That's gonna be at nine AM, and then we're gonna follow that up with the Decatur City Commission District 1 forum, and then we are done. So, Stone Mountain voters, if you are up as early as I am, maybe you got kids. I don't know, I'm always up early. Um, grab yourself a cup of coffee, join us at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. We're gonna have the Post 6. Every, every seat in Stone Mountain, I believe, is citywide. Um, so everyone will have a chance to vote on these candidates. So grab yourself a cup of coffee, get yourself a bagel or something, and sit down and, and, uh, watch the forum with us. We'll be here for another hour with the Post 6 candidates. I am Dan Wisniewicz. This is the Decaturist.com Twitch Show. Everyone have a lovely Friday evening. We'll see you bright and early tomorrow morning at nine AM. Bye-bye, everybody.
Thank you, Dan. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.